You wanted to give or?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sure, I will jump in. I just don't want to read what, you know, people have in front of them, but just to give an overview and just answer some random questions, if you have them, about general obligation bonds and what it means to the city. If that works for you, Mr. Mayor and then this is the council.
Sounds good.
Okay, for the record, my name is Cindy Cartlidge. I'm with the firm of Jermaine Denigan and Owens. And for the, for many years, I've had the pleasure of working with the, the city on its public finance, um, issues. So before we talk about G O. Bonds, just a little bit of context. Um, here in the state of Alaska, the ability for local government to incur debt, to borrow money, it's, it's restricted and it's pretty tightly restricted. Um, you have the constitution which needs to be complied with. You have Title twenty nine and then you have the city's charter. The way that most local government fund or finance capital improvements in their communities is through the issuance of municipal bonds, taking the form of general obligation bonds or revenue bonds. There's a big difference between the two. The general obligation bonds are considered to be the Cadillac or the gold standard of bonds, simply because of the pledge for repayment. When you issue those bonds, you're pledging the full faith and credit of your community. And what that means is that you are going to use all available funds that you have in your general fund to pay the debt service, the principal and interest on those bonds. And if those amounts are insufficient, that you're going to raise taxes to whatever level is necessary in order to pay the principal and interest on those bonds. Contrast that with revenue bonds. The city has issued a number of revenue bonds, um, as the proceeds and certain improvements to the water and wastewater utility. Um, the monies that are the revenues derived from the water and wastewater utility are then pledged for repayment. So two types of municipal bonds, the credit is very different. And the appetite's very different. Creditors like, of course, G O. Bonds because they are the gold standard. So some of the rules associated with the issuance of general obligation bonds, which apply not only to the city of Palmer, but to local government generally. Under the state constitution, you need voter authorization. So what you have just approved on your consent agenda is a bond ballot proposition ordinance. Um, if you approve that document, then what you're saying is that, you know, the ballot will go to the voters at the October third general election. The, the next requirement, when you issue general obligation bonds, one thing you need to keep in mind is that proceeds can only be used for capital improvements. Um, so when the framers of the constitution, and this is not just simply in the state of Alaska, but pretty much nationwide, they didn't want people to be paying for, you know.
Good job, good job. All right, we will call the meeting back to order at seven twenty one. Uh, next we have. Speak to this resolution. Please come forward. Or not. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Um, Mr. Manager, do you, am I correct in reading this that we're authorizing this money out of the general fund so we can purchase this, so we can turn around and do paperwork and get paid back?
That is a hundred percent correct.
Okay, sounds like a pretty good deal. Any other questions? Councilman Best?
What's the anticipated turnaround of those functions?
I, I, I think, so three sixty, turn us things around almost, you know, when you resurface them at three sixty. So it's really no radius, right? Just a, um, it's, it's a month or two. I'm anticipating it's a month or two.
Approve the manager? Councilman Best?
Well, I, I'm really hoping that, that M E A might be like a big sponsor of that, you know, being electricity and everything that, you know, maybe there'll be a big partner in that, so.
We could get two sponsors on the building, huh?
That's a good idea. Maybe we can have like a skin, like, you know, though, you know, like you have those cars with the skins advertising, maybe we can do that with the Zamboni.
Work on that, Brad.
You can call it the Tony Izzo.
Uh, Councilman Alcantra?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was thinking, sure, I'm not, has not. Okay, so we're really, we're really looking at five hundred days of delivery plus a month or two for the U S Department of Energy to do their thing. I got you. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We ready to vote then? Madam Clerk? Oh, did I get it? Well, we didn't get a motion, oh.
So moved, seconded.
So moved and seconded. Any other discussion? You guys need to catch me better on that. All right, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Maline?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Ojla?
Yes.
Councilmember Vest?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right. Resolution number twenty three dash zero two one directing city manager to authorize hardware and software upgrades to the city's technology infrastructure in the amount of thirty four thousand and fifty seven dollars. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak concerning this resolution, please come forward. Okay, we will close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
Second?
So it's been moved and seconded by alternate deputy mayor Anzalati. All right, is there any questions or?
For labor, but we have a service agreement contract with A C S. Why, why are we getting charged so much for labor for that? And I noticed one of the items is. I don't think I've ever purchased a service agreement for a switch before. They're just pieces of equipment. Why do, I mean, I've never called a vendor before in my life on a switch before. He just replace it. It's not that expensive. Um, this has, and, and I guess, you know, my main comment is, I, I remember, gosh, I guess it was a year ago, um, I had mentioned that it would really be good for Palmer to move. For fire departments, other emergency services. If we were to put something like that in place and do a router with backup internet, we wouldn't have to worry about internet outages and we would not have to be doing this every couple of years. So, and plus, it would keep our I T costs down because we wouldn't have to go after vendors who do twenty four seven support, which there aren't many in Alaska. So I just want to just really just hammer home, I, we really need to look at moving these services to the cloud and getting rid of having these physical services that need twenty four seven support because that could dramatically reduce our costs. Um, I, I know it's a big deal to make that switch, but.
Then I got a loss a day or two in putting something together. So that is the risk. However, I certainly understand your concerns, um, because I have the same concerns. So, um, and since I do have somebody who's very interested in that, um, if you're okay, we'll take, we'll, we'll, we'll take the, the risk for a couple of weeks. Um, I'll work with, um, the city council person, uh, to more fully address those. I mean, I'm, I, I T is, I T is not my bailiwick and I rely an awful lot on the, you know, the people, you know, we hire for these services, hence on why we are right now with the, with, you know, the former group. So if you want to kick this off for, for two weeks, um, yeah, we'll, we'll make, we'll make sure that, um, we have a plan in place if something happens before they can put this in service.
Yeah, I just, uh.
Councilman Tudor?
For, um, sorry, let me just begin to turn, Mr. Mayor, uh, for Councilman Vest, uh, we have until October, uh, before Microsoft stops supporting it and it's, and true, I mean, I shouldn't, probably shouldn't say this on record, but you know, Microsoft has released security patches after the fact, if it's something urgent. I don't want to put us in any kind of risk, of course, but, um, you know, one thing I would like to see is, is a plan of action from our I T vendor on, here's our timeline for moving to cloud, working with us on, uh, work in the fire department and, and other services on, on, you know, a service that they would like to use as cloud based. And we just, I, you know, just some sort of timetable saying, we will do this by this date with a project, especially when we're looking at spending, you know, thirty six hundred dollars on, on, uh, labor costs, which we're already paying a monthly service cost to them anyway. It just seems excessive to me.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Best?
Uh, so for myself, um, great questions that are outside of my depth. And so it, I'm, I'm not secure then in, in going forward with it. And if there's an opportunity to kind of hold back a little bit, make sure that we have a plan for it because I want to make sure that the money that we're going to be spending today is going to get us down the future towards the goal that we ultimately would like to go towards, not spend a bunch of money that's in the opposite direction of what we're already planning or anyhow. So I just want to make sure that word.
So if we postpone this, Councilman Tudor is willing to, uh?
Yeah.
Work with the manager and kind of discuss things?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be more than happy to help.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, the ad for the eleventh, the ad for the eleventh meeting has already gone to the frontiersmen because of the holiday. So it will be the seven twenty five, I think it is, or July twenty, whenever it is.
Is July twenty fifth still livable? For the manager?
Um, if we need a special meeting with what Josh discovers, I'm sure he'll be willing to do that.
Okay. Councilman Best?
Thank you. I, I, I move to postpone until that meeting.
Second.
Twenty fifth, was it? Madam Clerk? Twenty fifth?
I think, I, I can't see.
Twenty fifth. Okay, and I think, uh, Councilman Alcantra, second. Okay, so, uh, motion is to postpone until the July twenty fifth council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Maline?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Vest?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Ojla?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Okay, uh, Action Member and, uh, number twenty three dash zero three nine, excuse me. Authorizing city manager to spend a hundred and ninety six thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars in sub awards from the comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse site based program grant that was approved by the council on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty two. What's the wishes of the council?
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, is there questions of the manager and/or staff? Councilman Best, you nodded your head.
Uh, not direct questions. I'd like to have more, more staff report.
So we'll, we'll have, um, the good chief Shelton come up, but this is part of the child endangerment grant money that we received, and this is the next step, but, um, the chief can give you all the details.
Hopefully. So, yeah, um, last year we applied for and received a grant for, um, the drug endangered children, a multidisciplinary team. It was one point two nine million, I believe, was the, uh, total number of that. Part of that, um, was pass through funding to, um, the different, let me put my phone up here. Um. For the different providers, one was, uh, Chicklung Village Tribal Council, a Connect Tribal Council Set Free and Alaska Youth and Family Network. Um, part of that grant was just under fifty thousand dollars to be passed through to each one of those entities to be able to hire a part time personnel to, um. Handle the extra duties and assignments and stuff that was brought on by the multidisciplinary team. Um, it's added work for them. Um, it's a way to, um, I guess reimburse them for their costs for kicking off this, uh, and participating in this program, providing services. Do you, do you guys have particular questions or?
Councilman Alcantra?
Uh, yeah, thank you, chief. Um, so on October first, twenty twenty three, is there another round of, uh, forty nine thousand dollar dispersments, fifty, close to fifty, or a little close forty nine and fifty, but is there another round of dispersments that will occur October one of twenty three, or will everything disappear here on September thirtieth of twenty three, which is only a few months away?
So, yeah, so the funds with, with the grants, it took a while to get the front, funds released through by the federal government. These entities have been working out of pocket since October of twenty twenty two. And so this payment in there, they're needing the payment from the grant. Um, many of them have asked when, you know, when they would be getting paid and it was just, uh, the funds were just released, um. Around the beginning of June. And so to answer your question, yes, on October first, we will be bringing another, uh, A M. For you to then again prove funding for the fiscal, the federal fiscal year of twenty twenty four.
Good. Councilman Best?
And just, just for the record, this is really a pass through, kind of a community partnership of not our direct municipality, but other entities that are nearby that also, um, uh, have mutual interests that, um, we are necessary because of these federal funds. Uh, help me, help me understand this a little bit, that why is it that it's because it's our police force in the borough doesn't have a police force? Is that why it comes to us? And then, then we're helping distribute it out within the borough to these other entities?
Sure. So this is a multidisciplinary team that is comprised of fourteen agencies. Um. Commander Shane La Croix, um, applied for this grant in May, well, end of May, beginning of June twenty twenty two. Uh, the. Uh, the multidisciplinary team selected Palmer because we had the manpower and the ability to apply for the grant. State of Alaska couldn't, the unit, like you said, the, um, Berro didn't have a team, um, and then some of the other nonprofits and stuff weren't in a place where to, where they could really dedicate the time and manage it. It was something that, um, we were willing to do. So this is basically funds for the multidisciplinary team. City of Palmer is, um, managing them for that multidisciplinary game and then, and then distributing them as appropriate.
Any follow-up, sir?
Now, I'm gonna say this, but it's gonna sound a little callous, because if this was just a construction project, you would say, hey, are we making sure to get our fair dollar out of that thing? Because we're having to take our administrative services, you know, are we getting compensated for that? Because we're having to utilize this. But it, it kind of sounds callous for me to say that over trying to make sure that children are not, uh, you know, in drug situations or in that kind of stuff or need, need help. So I just want to make sure that there is, uh, funding mechanisms and this is, um, you know, all above board and we're covered in case there's any kickback or pushback on this, not really kickback, excuse me.
Yes, and I apologize, I do not have the complete entire document for me today on that. It's, it's, it's pretty massive. But in that grant, there is pass-through funding also for us to offset the costs of Gina and her team for managing this grant. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank, thank you, and, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Shelton, Chief Shelton explaining that, because this is really the, the public process where we get to understand what's. It's not just us having to fund it as a, as a, as a, you know, good community and, you know, we probably do that anyhow. But, um, that we're also being fiduciarily responsible for constituents, so, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Maline?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, Chief Shelton, it was to my understanding that this was, um, initially, this was somewhat of a pilot program, uh, for the, for the multidisciplinary team to come together to see how it could be effective with this program, because it was, it was, uh, even though it was a tried program, um, from, I believe, Ohio or, um, one of, one of those states. Um, but it was an opportunity for in- implementation within, uh, our community, uh, including the whole Matsu in order to see how we could effectively move that needle. Um, so, um, I, I think that it's important for the public process and the public to understand, um, that I, it, it is Wassila, uh, that's also involved, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, so we have several, several teams that, um, but I'd love for you at some point to talk, um, to us or maybe come to the council to talk to us about some of the successes, even though it might be hard to view them as successes, but maybe, um, some of the attributes and successes to see, um, what's measurable in the program and whether it's worth, um, retaining the program in the future.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that. We recently, um, brought on a, we're able to hire a drug endangered children coordinator. Her name is, uh, Jessica Bentley and, um, she's just got started that, uh, at the first of this month. And this is a, a four-year program that is, uh, like you said, a trial program. And we're really in our infancy. It, it kind of had a lot of traction and then kind of stalled while we were waiting to get that funding and to get things, get things kicked off. I, I knew the grants were gonna be, that can be a little bit arduous to get through, um, but the learning curve on this has been vertical. So, um, but we're able to, uh, get through that and we're hoping, we're very hopeful that, um, now that Jessica's on board, that we will be able to, um, I guess, pick up the pace with this, uh, with this program and then be able to come before the council and give you guys kind of a, you know, hey, this is where we started, this is where we're at, this is where we're going in the future, that sort of thing. We'd be happy to do that anytime you guys would like. I think in a few months at least would be, you know, to put it out a few months would be, would be, uh, appropriate.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, um, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Ojala?
Yes.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Councilmember Tutor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Maline?
Yes.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
unanimous?
All right, next we have unfinished business resolution number twenty-three dash zero one three A. Resolution of the Palmer City Council in support of the Matsu Valley Planning for Transportation as the Metropolitan Planning Organization of the Matsu Area, Formation of the MP as an independent organization and provide for the membership in the MPO as a member of the Board of Directors. This is unfinished business, so we already have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions concerning this? Councilman Tutor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I was just hoping to just to get clarification, um, just on the record that should, um, should this position pass? And should we be joined with the MPO and we decide for whatever reason, this isn't working for us? Um, do we as a, uh, city have the option to remove ourselves from being member, like voting members of the MPO? I just want to get clarification on that before the vote.
Mr. Manager?
So this is, this is a new organization, so they're putting the operation bylaws together. And I honestly do not think we're gonna have an escape policy. However, because we are member, it's voluntary, we don't have to be a part of this. Um, I believe a, a resolution by the city council withdrawing us from that board um, would be acceptable and appropriate in a way to change, um, our status. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we've been, uh, talking this one through now for just a little over two months. And, um, I think some of the, uh, conversation, some of the changes that have been made, uh, allowing for the elected mayor to participate or to actually be the member of the policy board, uh, strengthens this, uh, very much. I do think, possibly I'm just reading it wrong, but the final be it further resolved. It looks like to me that it should say Palmer Mayor will serve as a member of the Board of Directors of MVP for Transportation. It says, and right now, maybe I'm missing something, I'm, it just didn't read quite right to me in that last, uh, final be it further resolved. But, uh, I, I do think this, uh, product has gotten a lot better and, uh, I guess we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Uh, Councilman Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I've, uh, I know that a few of us have, have kind of stuck our nose into this one, um, and, um, don't feel right about it. And after, um, talking with, uh, other communities that have MPOs on top of them currently, um, what was stated the, at the last meeting that, you know, we asked for the, for the kind of the, give us the, the bad stuff. Oh, everything's roses and sunshine and, um, that, that isn't, that isn't accurate. There are community members, there are communities that are having to deal with the impacts of some of these things. Um, one situation i- in particular is North Pole. The MPO, um, decided that the best, um, project was to put some roundabouts in there. And the community didn't want it, it got put in. Now the community is having to look for a new piece of property for their visitor information center, because the roundabouts that were put in were too small for the DOT to allow the tour buses to go through. And so now that piece of property is no good to them. And the MPO is not gonna go back in there and help that community become whole. So I think that we still need some negotiating. This is our time to get back into this MPO with the, how it's going to be functioning. And I'm not willing, willing to sign off on this right now, because it is too much. And, uh, Councilman Tutor, you know, had to ask some questions of can, if, if a community didn't want to have something, do we have the authority to stop it? And I'm starting to hear from other folks that because we are a home rule municipality, we might have options. And those options could be that we as a body can reject something. And I want to make sure that we have those options in the language before we agree to go forward. It looked like the manager had some say.
Uh, Mr. Manager?
Yes, so just want to make a statement. Um, with this and with the, you know, North Pole, whether you're on that or not, you're on the council or not, they're gonna make those decisions regardless. The point is, are, is somebody from, the mayor from the city of Palmer gonna be in the decision-making room or is he not? Now, just, um, so one thing that kind of happened, it just happened. Um, so Matsu Borough is doing, putting a bond up for the citizens in October. City Palmer requested two small items. Um, one is to fix the crossing, Fireweed Crossing at five hundred thousand and the Evergreen Crossing at seven hundred thousand. We were just informed that somebody just wiped us off the map. So there is no projects coming up on this October or November bonding that has anything to do with City of Palmer. We were not asked to do anything, we were not informed, we are just, we just found out this happened. So if it's in other people's best interest to help us out, they will. But if it's not in their best interest, like we know with this winter where we tried to get some help with our snow plowing and that sort of thing. So I guess I want to state, and I think that's, I think it's finally going through the process, we need to be able to preserve our voice in all these things as a city of Palmer, however you want to do that. But, um, the MPO is going to rule no matter what, because of what happened with the approval of this overlaying the City of Palmer, City of Wassila and all the property in between. We don't get to choose whether we want these federal regulations, they are on us, and I just want to make that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Maline?
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to clarify one thing. I, I, I'm not saying that that's not true, but I'm saying that's not true. Because what we were told is, and, and this is where so much confusion lies, and especially for the council, is that those, those parameters and the way that the guidelines, uh, were set for the, um, for the MPO was that Palmer was not included in that. So it does not, uh, so it, um, I'm writing that, is that it was, um, Wassila, it was Tri, Tri Lakes or Me- and Meadow Lakes, uh, Meadow Lakes, I think is what it was. But, and Connect, but it was not Palmer. The City of Palmer was not, we have the option, we do not have to be in this. That was to my understanding, that was what was made very, very clear to me. But also, um, that it's to my understanding that they cannot overrule, um, what Palmer's decision-making capabilities for Palmer is, they cannot overrule us. Um, so, and if that is the case, then that's an even bigger problem and there is more lack of transparency and more that we need to dig in. And I agree, I feel like we need to put this off, because, um, that's new information that is quite shocking, honestly.
Yes, I was unaware that we had, in fact, everything I've been told, the City of Palmer is included and does not have a choice to opt out. And if we can opt out, opt out. I just, everything that I have been told is no, you are a part of this. And I don't, I mean, I agree, it's a new set of, um, new set of government, new set of, um, um, regulations and funding to do transportation. But those rules are in place. And here's this, here's the thing, I don't want to confuse this, but we have MS four, which is stormwater. That is going to have even a bigger impact on that, and those are federal regulations on our size. We also have a transportation issue on, you know, what are requirements for the City of Palmer to provide transportation to the public? Because we've met this fifty thousand dollar threshold. So I want to say, if you could find a way to say City of Palmer is excluded, great. I just don't, from everything I know and understand, um, through having an MPO that I was a part of in Minnesota and here in Fairbanks, it's, we don't have a choice to be in that. If, if there is and you can have the person who informs you come and they can do that, I would say that's the direction to go. I just, I'm just hearing everything that is not the case. And maybe that's where we start the clarification. Can we get out of all of this and not be included in any of this?
Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you. So if we couldn't, if we, if we weren't able to opt out, then why are we even taking a vote? I, I, I mean, I'm just.
So here's the difference.
Council, uh, Mr. Manager, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Okay, so we are in the zone, whatever you want to call it, we are in the zone. Whatever happens in the zone, it's either do we have a seat at the table to make that decision and say our piece? Or do we, do we not have a seat at the table and somebody else is gonna make those decisions? Case in point, what I just said, you know, the Matsu Borough is doing a transportation bond. We submitted something, they said, no, you know, we're not going to include that. Now, I'm gonna have a discussion with the managers, I just learned about this the other day, and I think maybe we can appeal to them. But I guess my point is that we've had as, as a city some concerns with nonprofits and our relationship with nonprofits. My view, and may, you know, maybe from the John Mucie rose-colored glasses, is that if we had a city council person on those nonprofits, some of those decisions would be different. But because we had no voice, they made decisions without any input from us. So, so my view of this whole thing on voting, do we want to have input on this? Or do we want, do we not want to have input on this? But if you can opt out, let's find out, because that is, that is not what I am understanding. But, yeah, if you can point me the right direction on getting that person here or that group here, I'm, I think that's what we need to do. You need to know, can you be in this or not be in this?
Yeah, and I think, I think that's, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's part of the, the things that we have been asking over and over and over again. And then meeting with North Pole as well as meeting with even with Wassila and, and asking about that. But also with, um, people from the borough who have, who have said, you, no, you do not have to, you're not part of this if you, if you choose not to be. So I, um, so again, it's like muddy water. Nobody understands what is that, and it's almost like it's an, an intentional confusion laid upon the people with a, with just, um, another layer of a nonprofit that you speak of, that's gonna be put, thrashed upon us.
So, so, yeah, so, so you're hearing us from the, from the Matsu Borough that we do not have to be a part of this MPO operation and that does not apply to our city?
Those are the things that I have heard, yes, in my, um, learnings, yes.
Yes, and I, okay, and I understand we have, I'm hearing different, just want you to know that. So I think let's clarify that. If we can be out of this whole MPO zone regulations, MS four, if we have to have MS four, I mean, that's a happy day.
Mr. Mayor? So, yeah, my understanding from the documents is that we're, we're included in the maps and now it's a question of do we opt in to be part of the process or not? Councilman Tutor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, add that too. Um, yeah, that was my understanding as well is through, through this process is that the MPO is a federal requirement. It's gonna be here, it's just a matter of if we want to have a, um, a voting seat or not. And, and that even if we don't have a voting seat, uh, the policies set by the MPO would affect us. Now, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, um, definitely like clarification on that. Um, but one question I have, since there is this confusion, I, I know we've put this off a lot. And I know, and I, my understanding is that, uh, this is going to the governor by June, so we don't have a lot of time. Is, is this an option to put it off or is it, I mean, my understanding is we kind of. Is is this an option to put it off or is it, I mean, my understanding is we gotta vote on it now, but just wanted a clarification since there is some confusion about this.
So I think the question is, I do not know if this has been approved by the Matsu Borough. And I'm hoping I get a text here, it has or not. Um, if they have not done it, then it's not, it's not gonna get approved by the governor until the Matsu Borough. So if that's the case, I think you still have a little, you know, a little time. But I think you need a clarification is if we can be excluded from the map and these, these regulations.
Councilman Best?
I'd like to go in a different direction, please. I I'm of the opinion, it's happening to us whether we like it or not, okay? Um, I, what I'm wanting to do is not sign right now. Because this is our only position to negotiate. Right now, we, they are still crafting the rules for how this organization is going to be ran. Well, why is this, this pre-work being done if nobody has agreed to anything yet? Agreed to to work together and then go forward, they're, they're putting the cart before the horse. And so right now, I think we don't. So that we can have clarity and potentially work with our attorney and our administration to find out if home rule municipalities have any options. Within this to, and like I said, I don't believe that we're gonna be able to stop a lot of stuff. But when it comes to something like a roundabout in the location the community doesn't want, I wanna know that this community has a voice. We're a home rule municipality and I'll be darned if I'm gonna let them just roll over us like that.
So, uh, Mr. Manager?
Yes, on the the magic of text, uh, the Matsu Borough is going to be dealing with this on June eighteenth. July eighteenth, sorry, yes, they did not deal with June eighteenth, they're gonna do it on July eighteenth. So, um, so you, so you have, you have that. Um, and going back, Councilman Member Maline is correct. The three, you know, the the three groups that have to be a part of this. Matsu Borough, City Wassila, DOT, we are optional. And 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 here's, right, but we're optional to be on the board, not optional to be in the zone.
Yeah, the ex, whether we're excluded from the map or not is.
Now, here's, here's something else to consider, is I know we're dealing with this, you need to have enough time. But there could come a point, is this goes by the governor, that the train may leave the station, Travis, pun intended. Um, and they may say, well, the city of Palmer did not opt, not opt in, so therefore, they will not be a part of this. They've not said that, but that's a possibility on timing.
So I, yes, my question is, how do we clarify this? Councilman El Cantor, do you wanna weigh in on that?
I move to postpone Resolution twenty-three oh one three A until July twenty-fifth.
Hang on. I I'd, I'd like us to finish discussing how are we gonna find out more information? Before we postpone, because once you start to postpone, you have to take a vote. Yeah, so I don't wanna stop debate yet. So, Mr. Manager, how?
So, so, so here's, here's kinda my thought on this. This is a city council decision. Who does the city council want to hear from? And we've heard from the Matsu Borough a couple of times, we've had DOT, you know, here. We've had the gentleman from um, the North Star Borough Fairbanks come. Um, we've contacted the governor's office. Um, who else do you want to hear from? Um, for you to be further informed to make a decision, because I don't know who else to get. And I don't know who, I I think in my mind, it was explained, but I understand. You're not fully accepting the explanation. And I mean, I certainly understand that, um, that you, you know, when you have speakers, that sort of thing. But for more clarification, what, who do you want me to bring to the city council for consideration of this?
Councilman Odela.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think that's kinda the problem is we've heard from all those entities and we're still all going. What, what are the rules? And the fact that they're still crafting the bylaws and all that kinda stuff and it's like. Well, we don't, what are we doing? Why, why would we say, I mean, we need some more information, I think. I think they need to. It up a little bit before we're voting for it. I don't wanna, that's all, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, Council, Councilman El Cantor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm not sure if the answer is we need to even hear from a bunch of other people. I think the answer could lie in the fact that what you just mentioned of what I knew from before is that the borough will act on July eighteenth. Maybe, I mean, I know Wassila's passed this unanimously, but maybe with the borough's um, action. And with some time to look at some of the answers to the questions that other council members uh, put forth. That it may just be a matter of time and a matter of hey, did the other government body is gonna have two seats? Um, I understand that, right? Um, or did they actually vote uh, to approve this thing on July eighteenth? And that's why I proposed a July twenty-fifth date, but I uh, I'm happy to keep the conversation going. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Maline.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think what I would like to see, and while I appreciate the comments, um. You know, I just wanna, not that I need to remind you, but I, for me, this is about my constituents. And the constituents are really bent out of shape about this, and in all fairness, they should be. Um, what I would like is a legal opinion from both borough and our um, uh, attorney. On what this actually means, what our legal responsibility is. And regulatory, you know, what, what and how this has been crafted to the, to the extent that we have to be. In this, in this or or how the, how the regulations are, or how were crafted and built. And the limitations. And then, of course, the mapping, if the mapping is absolutely one hundred percent set in stone, if they did in fact. Because we know that that mapping was pretty, um, uh, I mean, we didn't get a decision in any of that. That was all pre-planning phase. So, um, I, I would prefer to have the legal opinion if that is appropriate task for.
Possibly, probably. Councilman Tudor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and um, uh, Councilman, um, sorry, Deputy Mayor Maline, I definitely agree with that. And I, I think this is where a lot of this is coming from is, is um, we're ve- very concerned about seeing. Um, the direct role of government erode into bureaucracy, you know, because right now, you know, we can control road projects. And and listen to constituents, find out what people want and 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 act on it. And we're concerned about this outside organization, for lack of a better word, coming in and dictating terms to us. Like saying, we're gonna do this over there, even if you don't like it, we don't care. And so that's why I think um, a lot of this is coming from. And so, um, I I I think that asking for some legal clarification is a good idea, especially, you know, just basically who has final say on decisions. So let's say the MPO decides, you know, hey, we wanna put a roundabout in the middle of city hall, you guys gotta move city hall. Are we able to say, no, we're a home rule city, you can't do that? And 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 of course, you know, are we able to leave? You know, what, what are the repercussions if we change later on? For example, if we're putting in X amount of dollars and we don't get that back, are we able to do that? And and of course, I think um, uh, you know, it came up with that, there is some confusion over whether or not we're stuck uh, being in the MPO. If we don't join, my understanding is that we would be and that definitely changes the voting aspect a lot. Because if you have to be part of an organization and you're asking yourself, do I wanna have a vote in the organization? It's very different than saying, do I wanna join an organization at all, or I can be excluded entirely from its decisions. And so I think this is kinda where it's coming from. I understand this is very, is that there's a lot of debate going on. This is healthy and it's just part of the process because we are getting a lot of feedback from the community. And this is good. I think it's good for us to clarify these things and and uh, I just think a a legal framework would really help us. And understanding really as much as possible what we're getting into. And and I do understand just kind of a devil's advocate thing, is it better for us? It's a thought experiment, is it better for us to be part of this during the formation stage? So we can help the formation to be more favorable to um, to the city of Palmer? Or is it better to to let them, you know, build the framework and then we decide later, okay, that's a good framework we wanna join? This is just something we have to debate and and think about. But um, I, you know, I think having that, it would be a good idea just to give us a good framework to to run on.
Okay, the, one thing I'd like to caution is we can direct our attorney, we can't direct or expect anything from the borough attorney. But we can request our attorney to interact and and I'm just, just wanting to clarify our, our, what scope we can do. Councilman Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I'm very interested in the home rule aspect. Um, beca- and and this isn't, this isn't on us saying as a home rule that we're just not gonna play with, with, with your rules. And we don't, we're not, the federal government's gonna hammer this thing over the top of us and it really, uh, I'm, I'm of the mindset. That I think that there's no way that we can not be affected by it, whether we like to participate or not. That's, that's a different way of looking at it. We're gonna be affected by it, whether or not we get to have a seat at the table. My point with the home rule side is in the negotiation portion of the, how the organization is structured. In which, and then how the voting parameters happen, you know, that I would like to see it in the bylaws. That any municipality that say that they have a governing body and maybe it's by a super ma- majority vote. Or a vote of the people even, I mean, anything like that could happen in the bylaws. But then that that MPO will respect that of that community. And the other member, voting members of the MPO will override that municipality. And this is why I believe that our negotiating point is right now before we sign it. And because those rules are being crafted currently by the, the pre. Uh, what is it, the pre-organizational group? And all the, that language is being crafted. And this is also, this is the politics of it. This is where, this is what we're elected for. This is where now we get to do the politicking of why are we going through with this? We can work with the city of Wassila and the Matsu Borough and all them and try to negotiate better terms. If for, for a better, you know, a better word.
Councilwoman Anzalati, do you have any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I'm honestly very skeptical of this. I think it sounds good on paper, but I think there's, um. I'm just really hesitant, um, not only regarding the makeup of the board. Because we had to change our, um. Our resolution to say that we would have the mayor be our, our member of the board if we were to join. Um, but I, you know, I don't know exactly uh, who the other groups are wanting to put on as their members. Um, I think that the lack of accountability and also just the confusion surrounding this is not a good sign. Um, and I, I just see it adding a lot of bureaucracy and red tape to a lot of things that we want to get done as a city. I don't think efficiency is always a good thing, especially uh, when it overrides local government. Because from what I understand, I think that, um. It sounds like they are going to be able to override uh, what the city wants to do if they want to. And I, I don't think that's beneficial to the city at all, um, or our constituents. Um, I think that a lot of the funding, sounds like it may be easily directed to larger projects. That we may have little to do with. Um, and while I see the benefit of having a seat at the table. Um, if we have to be um, involved and and a part of this map. Um, I also don't see our vote making much of a difference in our favor, honestly. Um, I think. There might be good intentions behind this, but I, I think that things could easily take a wrong turn with it.
Councilman Odela?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think part of what's going on here is. All of this isn't quite passing the smell test a little bit. And I, I think everybody's having a hard time quantifying that, like this is all making us leery. And so these are our instincts kicking in, you know, we all do business deals and stuff like this all the time. There's something about this that has got everybody. Uneasy, the hackles are up a little bit, and I think we just need to pay attention to that.
So what do we wanna do?
We'll just postpone until July twenty-fifth.
And direct the attorney to uh.
And the direct the attorney to answer the questions about home rule and uh, other, other things that she was. Writing notes as fast as she could, so she's got it, I think she's got it down pretty well.
Second, lots of second, and then we'd like to hear what the attorney believes she's doing.
So if I understand correctly, we're putting together the data to do a cost benefit analysis for the city of Palmer. Um, particularly uh, evaluating jurisdictional authority, um, the terminology that I looked at. Both what is the impact of home rule law versus um, federal of the MPO, how do those interact and overlap? And if we're, say, I also added physical geographic little jurisdiction. For example, if they wanted to do something associated with DOT authority, which is the Glen Highway, which runs through Palmer. How does that interaction evaluate out? Um, what if, what if there's a conflict? So can the local government object to an approved MPO if we do not have a seat and how is that conflict resolved? It's what I'm hearing, um, what is the current status of the operating agreement and the bylaws that are being developed? And what input is going to be allowed if we were members in crafting them? Um, just for a point of reference, the bylaws of a nonprofit are the most important document. Um, that will dictate everything and there's as much flexibility as you can with any kind of contract law. Um, and then what is the potential cost and impact if we, if Palmer joins the MPO? Is there an exit strategy that's possible? Um, are there costs associated with uh, the city of Palmer should they exit? And then what is the cost benefit analysis if Palmer decides to join in July, when the borough, if and when the borough approves um, their piece? Did I miss anything?
As I, as I said, Mr. Mayor, copious notes.
Um, is everyone happy with the understanding? Okay, so this is.
Just wanna clarify, this won't be a traditional legal opinion then, you know, it'll be answering questions and pulling in the laws we have and 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 getting as much data as I can.
Yes, and so then, the question is postpone until July twenty-fifth meeting with the attorney. Doing a whole bunch of research and coming back to us no later than the twenty-fifth. Alright, okay. Madam Clerk, if you can call the role, please.
Councilmember Odela?
Yes.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Maline?
Yes.
Councilmember El Cantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes. Okay, Councilman Best?
If you don't mind, can I just interject for, for, and and this is just a thought. We're, we're, we're asking the attorney to develop a lot of work product. But there's also work product that has to go out for public consumption. If we're gonna have that, that to be consumed beforehand, I wanna make sure that she has flexibility to bring the information to that meeting. It's on the, on the agenda of how it's, you know, we've already gotten all the base information. But then she would be presenting that, that would give her up to that time and then it would be laid on the table and then part of the public record at that point, correct? Do we have that option?
Yeah, but I believe we're trying to get this nailed down, so anything that she can get in writing for the packet, I believe would be very helpful.
At July fifteenth? The Thursday, the fourth, the nineteenth. Oh, I'm sorry, did you ask me a question?
I'm saying we need something in writing for the packet because this is a difficult thing and we need it in writing.
Oh, excuse me, yes, I'll be booking it a bit and um I was, I'm gonna be flying out on the nineteenth, so I'll have it in advance before then.
Okay, where are we at? No new business, record of items placed on the table. Is there any?
Document from Attorney Cartage.
Oh, from the attorney for about the uh. The bond, okay. Uh next we have audience participation. Anyone wishing to? Speak to the council? Losing money, man. So please sign in if you haven't already, state your name, three minutes per person.
Okay, well, I'm learning some stuff here. Uh I would like to say that there that. As far as the library goes, I would like to, I would like to see if it's possible for for people. To submit their own ideas about the library, cuz um. Sixteen million dollars for for the library, I mean, gonna. That's how much God make make every penny count with it, that's what I have to say, you know, and. Yeah, I'm also serious about the about the about the idea for the train station, you know, get those tracks. You know, placed and so that they could be used and the train station could be used. So that, I mean, think about it, that's that's probably a lot of potential revenue for the city of Palmer. And so that's something, that's something to think about. Um that's all I have, yeah.
Anyone else for audience participation?
My name is Herb Bischof. I live here in Palmer. Thank you for opportunity to talk. And earlier when you were discussing the options with the library, uh you said that you would like community input cuz it's an important decision. I appreciate the manager's comment that this is a legacy project for the council. And since I'm here and a member of the community and one of your constituents, I'll start it off by saying that. As others have said, it's an important thing, we have to have the library, but it is also an opportunity for you. The opportunity rests in doing some of the things you've been wanting to do or the council has been wanting to do in the past, which includes. Addressing the needs of the city hall, addressing the needs of a core uh community center that's. Focused on the services for the public that includes city hall. And I know when you're remodeling your own house with somebody else's money, it's difficult to advocate for what you might really like. But as a constituent, member of the community, I'd be happy to do that for you. I think Palmer deserves adequate facilities for the function of the city, so. Please take that input on my behalf and I can get others to say similar things. The other thing I wanted to mention, just briefly, is a heads up that we're working on a small community. Uh project in the greater Palmer area to get. Uh and and essay from members of the community describing how they experience Palmer, what they love about it and what. One or two things they think would do to they could do to improve it. This is our third year of doing an essay like this and we've gotten word out and so we've had a lot of responses. And if you're interested, uh this uh contest is being sponsored by Fireside Books and. They're offering some gift certificates to people who write some of the essays. They're coming from children, adolescents and adults. Uh related only to the greater Palmer area. And we're hoping that some of the better ones we'd like to consolidate and if you're interested, we'd be happy to share those views with you, uh council members. And that would give you another avenue of input from some of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for audience participation? Mr. A.
City Council, my name is Eric Anderson. Thank you for the opportunity again. Um thank you, Mr. Moosey, for um clarifying my my math. If I did that, my real job, I left out a zero, I wouldn't have a job. That was a big zero, by the way. The MPO is a is a very tricky thing and here's why um. I'm I'm not comfortable with it for one because it's already started. They've got a pre-planning committee, we don't have anybody on board, they've already made laws, they're making bylaws. Um when I hear the word nonprofit, I, as a normal person would, is skeptical cuz nonprofits. Have good intention, but a lot of them seem to be um. Uh not working legally or in the best interest of the community, more or less the people that serve on them. Um and that's what I'm afraid of is people that may be appointed to this. Um have a bigger voice around the community, whether it's in construction or if it's in business or whatever and they can steer. Funds in a certain way that doesn't benefit the whole community and if we don't have a seat at the table now. What's already started and happened and what kind of deals have been made, we're we're we're. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be like this. We say we wanna join and they're gonna say, here's everything we talked about before you got here. I I'm not comfortable with it and the fact that we have a s- a city of six thousand people and we have two roads that come through our city that are main arteries. And we have to fight over federal funds, uh i- and it's it's. It's a way for the government, the federal government to ease up how they allocate funds, but it's it's really hard for the state to manage this. And how they're gonna oversee the MPOs and make sure they're following laws. I mean, no offense to our our city attorney, but. We should have had some legal answers today, last last ones uh meeting because. These are the questions that keep coming up and and we still don't have them answered and while this is going on, you know, they're still debating. Uh maybe um not as a quorum, but maybe individually over, you know, trying to make things work. How are we gonna set this up? If the public doesn't have a say in it, then I don't want nothing to do with it. If we have a mayor that is. Appointed or anybody with the city that's appointed by the council to represent, if they're not accountable to the people. Um I'm not for it because this this is a major deal. This affects not just roads. Sidewalks, buses, airplanes, anything to do with transportation is affected by this and it's not just. Uh we wanna build a bridge across the inlet. They had that chance and they gave up on it, so um. I would like to see more involvement with the local people now and so. I'm for joining the MPO just to get caught up, but I'm also for legal advice from the the attorney on, hey. This is what we're dealing with and yes, we do want in in or no, we don't, and I think that should be up to the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see anyone else coming forward. Close, audience participation. Uh next we have executive session. Subject that tend to prejudice the reputation, character of any person, a city manager evaluation. And uh action may be taken by the council following the executive session. So we're gonna take a break and get ready for basically the manager and the council will be in the executive session. Oh, but we have to have a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I move to move into executive session, please.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote on that, and this may be uh out of line, um would it be good to move our councilman comments before we go to executive? Cuz usually everyone kind of, you know, disconnects after that. Just just an idea, if it's possible.
I can retract that motion.
Okay, do we wanna suspend the rules? I guess so. Alright, no objection, we will suspend the rules. So, Councilman Tudor, you seem to have something to say.
I gotta go first, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was just making things easier for everybody. Um yeah, I just wanna say the uh uh Highland Games were amazing, just wanna say uh thank you for the Palmer Police Department, Fire Department. It was amazing to be out there on a windy day, I was out there on Sunday. Uh Millie would talk about this, this MPO, I know it's been going on for a long time and there's a lot of emotion and and opinion, I and I think. It really comes down to risk mitigation and and you know, my thought is if. This organization is is going to be more or less above us and we're gonna be subject to the rules regardless of if we want that or not. Then to me, it seems like we need to do everything we can to help protect our rights and I think um in that case, should we be able to leave? Uh the best course of action would be to reluctantly join just to protect our rights as a city. However, if we're not able to leave and if we're not able and if we don't have to be subject to their rules, I would rather not be subject to it at all. So that's why I think it's so important for us to understand the real ramifications of this MPO because we have had many projects that have been on here. That the expert testimony has told us could have been paid for by MPO funds, now that may have been rainbows and unicorns. But I think if we can help pay for some of this road equipment that we've been having to purchase and and road improvements, that could help. But again, I'm very reluctant. It's under certain conditions. I think that we really have to be able to identify whether or not we're gonna be subject to the rules. Even if we're not a member, cuz that is the crux of this whole issue, because if we don't have to be subject to rules, if we don't join. I think we should not join, but if we're going to be subject to the rules, even if we don't join. I think uh you know reluctantly, it's just something we just have to bite the bullet on. Thank you.
Councilman Ogula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. This MPO thing's been a big deal. Um I would invite anybody with an opinion on it to contact me and let me know because. The really, you know, we're like doing a lot of thinking about it and and really. The easiest thing to do is just to go with the constituents and right now I've heard like ninety percent no, ten percent yes. On this thing and that's the way I'm gonna vote. And this, you have a different opinion, let me know. Thank you.
Councilman Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh yeah, the uh the Scot- Scottish Highland Games, uh for those that did not get to go. It it was a different flair, just like it was expressed to us um here at the council chamber. Um the last year, um much larger uh participants. And just monsters walking down the midway, just you know, and when you see him chucking the poles and all this kinda stuff. But it was a smaller, smaller group of of folks, uh smaller framed athletes. And um but still impressive as all get out and um to to see some of those ladies that were out there and the guys performing it. Such high levels is impressive, but uh just a lot of good fun and and uh um you know, us getting to enjoy a little bit of summer. Uh on those, that first day, but um back to the MPO, I wanna make sure that we. Impress upon this. Um emerging nonprofit that is, that they are to be an advocate for our communities. That they they are not the end all to be all, but they are they are truly supposed to be set up to be an advocacy. And to help streamline the process. One thing that I I would like to point out is what we don't hear of is. If we're gonna have twelve more employees or however many employees they're gonna end up with. We're not seeing a reduction of state employees or borough employees. So are we creating a redundancy of performance, um you know, criteria that we're gonna have employees doing the exact same job? Um it's kinda interesting that there's a, there's a federal requirement for us to grow the bureaucracy. But but not truly show efficiency. Um so it it's it's been kind of interesting to to see this this whole thing come to fruition. And um I don't think we're done yet and I really hope that we take the position that this is our negotiating. Position within the organization that to help them craft their laws because this will come down over the top of us. But we, I wanna change how the perspective is, that they are to be an advocate. And fight for our communities, not against our communities.
Deputy Mayor Maline?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I actually was out of town for the uh Highland Games, but um. But I did follow on Facebook and it looked like uh they were having a great time. I also would like to just say, hey, to the police department, you guys were looking pretty. Pretty sharp out there. I'm pretty proud of our of our Palmer Police Department and how. It's grown and the professionalism and and just the the overall um presence that. Uh you you all are choosing to immerse yourself into the community, so um thank you for that. Um I do uh appreciate a lot of the comments in regards to the uh opportunities that we have before us with the. Library and the legacy uh that is before us and the potential. Of how we can be creative uh with those funds, but not only that, but um you know, some of the maneuvering and possible. You know, possibilities that we have, um uh you know, of the combination of of a library and. And possibly a city hall and and who knows um where we can go with that, um. Uh so I really look forward to what what can happen uh uh with that. Uh as far as the MPO goes, I, you know, I have studied this thing until I'm just blue in the face. In fact, I I. Um I hear MPO and it's just like this wave of exhaustion just kinda comes over me because it's so huge. And um I've had an opportunity to really look through not only Anchorage's MPO proposal, but um several. Uh MPO um proposals across the United States and some of the things that I'm seeing come out of these MPOs. Are, you know, it it's classic, it's it's the, you know, the climate change and the. And the um you know, the barriers that come with uh um making sure that you have. Bikeable and and um you know, electric, you have to have so many electric cars and so many electric vehicles that um. And vehi- uh electric transportation for the city and and you think about that and you think. What? You know, we we live in Alaska and our needs are quite different. Um you know, having an electric vehicle as a personal um mode of transportation is quite different than having a fleet. Or um at the infrastructure that's capable of um of um maintaining and. Operationalizing um something of that nature is quite huge. And um and uh you know, the other thing that I just wanna remind people is is that these aren't. Just because it's federal dollars doesn't mean that we're, it's not our money. It's our money, it's it's um. Does we pay taxes on this and we've got a spending problem, you know, we've got a spending problem in this country. I mean, that's pretty evident and um more federal money being, you know, in in um being. Uh um billed as as another nonprofit and other layer that we. Uh don't necessarily have a voting consensus for, um that would be traditional and normal in the processes. Uh that we have for a city structure and council is quite concerning and I think that's what people um. Really have taken to heart and are really struggling with. Uh and I think that um. I I would agree with Mr. Best on on the fact that, you know, what, I think that a lot of nonprofits have have lost sight. Of who they are and what their sole core responsibility and mission statements are. And um and they've moved beyond that into political um action committees and lobbyists and and. And 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 quite honestly, we've got examples of that every day. Um and so to enter into an agreement such as this is just. Um it boggles my mind that we would be forced into um. Into just falling in line, getting in line. Um while I agree, I think that um having some type of control is better. Than having none, but um like I said, with the with uh some of the things that I've heard is that we're not required to. So um there's a reason why Palmer wasn't um originally in the original draft and so um. I just, I'm looking forward to hearing what the attorney, uh what her networking with maybe perhaps the borough attorney. Uh and what that general consensus is uh for Palmer. So um and that is it.
Councilwoman Anzalati?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm really thankful that we have a council that researches all this stuff and and makes. Sure that, you know, the decisions we make are not just made on the spot, that we um make sure that um we are. Very aware of what's going on, uh not just in our city, but in the surrounding areas, so thank you guys for for your comments and I agree. And I agree for the most part with what my cons, or my constituents, my fellow council members have said so far. And I just, you know, looking at this resolution, it, it says that we support, you know, were we to agree with, or passed this resolution, it says that we support the MVP and its formation. And I just, you know, I'm just really hesitant to agree with that. And so right now, I, I don't support it. And I'm just looking forward to what the attorney has to, to come back with as well. So, thank you.
Councilman Alcantara.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's start off with the Scottish Highland Games. They were fantastic, especially if you went on Saturday where the weather was pretty amazing. I was this many years old, minus four days, when I had my first Scotch egg that I stood in line for for over half an hour, but it was worth it. It was amazing and I can't believe that I'd never heard of one before. So it was quite, quite the treat indeed. So it was, and my whole family went, had a great time. Of course, the weather helped a bunch. And those hearty folks that went on Sunday, you know, I, I hope they made it out okay. But it was, it was a great, a great event, glad we're a part of it. On the MPO issue, a lot of strong emotions and a lot of, a lot of work and due diligence has gone into talking to other local government bodies, doing research and seeing what the best course of action may be. Right now, I think I more closely align with, with my fellow council member on the other side of the room, Mr. Tudor, in the sense of, I think the train's gonna leave the station and whether you're gonna be on the train or we're gonna be laying down on the tracks, getting run over. And I, I think the work that our city attorney will do will hopefully help answer some of those questions. And maybe, maybe it'll steer me in a different direction if, if things come out of that work that she's going to do. I want to say to Councilman Ojala, fantastic job tonight on the Colony High thing. I know not only your pride as being an alum, but Colony High's had an incredible year this year. They seem to be like every other week or every other meeting, they're in here getting another award for winning a state championship. They've, they really have done amazing, whether it be soccer, track and field, football. I mean, the list goes on and on. So, so great job on that. I want to thank the folks, of course, that testified tonight. I really think, you know, it's important to hear their voices and, and know that we listen intently, whether we vote the way you think we should vote or not. Your testimony is very important. Big event tomorrow at Job Corps. If you're all into listening to politicians' speeches, Senator Murkowski, Senator Sullivan, Congressmember Potola, Governor Dunleavy will all be there tomorrow. It's 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. But if you're gonna show up, I recommend be there about 9:30, 9:45 to get a seat. The ribbon cutting is supposed to happen exactly at 10:50, which means people can get out of the parking lot by 11:00. I know it's a lot, it's the middle of the week, just a lot of stuff going on. But it's a, it's a big event with all of our Alaska congressional delegation there and our governor there. So it's a pretty huge event. Now I have to go on to something and tell folks that I made a, a pretty drastic mistake on Sunday evening replying to a Friday email that was sent on behalf of nine community members and addressed to our city manager, our mayor, and the rest of the council members. So replied all to 16 people, I think, and I got my attorney here next, I got the attorney here next to me, that had I replied all and, and deleted four council members and just left three council members into the email, I probably would have been okay, but I, I didn't do that. So for the record, I am going to read this in for the people that might want to go back and hear these things. So on June 23rd, we received from nine different citizens of the city of Palmer, Dear Mayor Carrington, City Manager Moosey, City Council Members, several of us locals meet weekly for coffee to discuss what's going on in Palmer. We've been active during the past 30 years or so. Would like to offer some feedback to help promote your work as community leaders. First, thank, thank you for the time and effort you put into helping making Palmer so livable. We often hear about the many virtues offered within our community and to keep it friendly and thriving. The work of your governance and leadership is vital to help continue making Palmer so livable and to promote its role as a destination community. We'd like to offer some suggestions for moving forward. Number one, we support protecting the downtown core and encourage a more proactive role for the council and planning, accepting and managing the inevitable changes that will continue to shape our community. Number two, we would like a more assertive effort to annex surrounding areas, particularly west of Trunk Road, south of the sewer plant, and areas where city services such as water and our sewer are provided. Number three, this is A through F, please complete some of the longstanding projects needing attention. For example, A, work on railroad tracks, crossing roads, especially on fire we didn't call any way. B, ask the road to move the rail cars by the fairgrounds, they're ugly. C, encourage utilization of abandoned, abandoned tracks to allow walkability or bike riding. Instead of overgrowth, another high store in place for vagrants to hang out. D, create some sort of traffic control, flashing light at East Arctic and Valley Way. E, pave the roads in North Palmer within the city limits. F, encourage high-end, high-density housing in the downtown core. Number four, we'd appreciate any support of our local Palmer senior center. They need some help delivering services, expanded housing options, and working with other service providers within the city. Five, please look favorably on joining the Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. This will allow access to far more projects and infrastructure that the city would be challenged to complete alone. Would also give Palmer a seat at the table concerning borough-wide policies and projects. Thank you for your hard work and service to the Palmer community. So that was the, the letter that came to these, to these folks. So my response. Dear Herb and Al, thank you so much for your correspondence. It'd be my pleasure to respond with my thoughts, such an august group. As you know, several years ago, I was able to participate in your coffee gatherings and sincerely miss those days with Howard Best and several of you. Before diving into your five suggestions, I will tell you an old adage in politics is that each piece of correspondence speaks for 10 people and each testifier for 100. I would strongly suggest that many of you join Mr. Molesky on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month to testify to council directly. With that suggestion, let me get to yours. Number one, I agree the downtown core of Palmer needs ever greater involvement from the council and the citizens of Palmer. Recently, I attended the Palmer Community Foundation event and although it was an inaugural event, I could see the care when you take in our fine city. I'm hoping the police bike patrol will also assist in law enforcement being closer to the people. Any suggestions you have on how we can help with the growing pains of Palmer are ones I will listen to and take to heart. Number two, I've been on the council for 13 months and admittedly, my knowledge on annexation is lacking. I, for one, will have to get with the city manager and other community members for more thorough education on these matters. Three A. Sorry, three A, lost this part. I know these roads are rough and have been discussed for their follow-up as needed. Those are the train tracks. Three B, I was told they purposely left railroad cars on the tracks to discourage people from running across the highway to access the fairgrounds. Now it may be just a convenient parking spot. Three C, I do feel this would be a fantastic use, but once again, this is Alaska railroad property and not city of Palmer. Maybe time to invite the road out to address the council. Three D, is this traffic year-round or way into the school year? I admittedly have not heard of this particular issue until now. Three E, again, a new issue for me. I have heard from some citizens, real anger from roads being paved, speeding, loss of old-time feel, et cetera. Some more information is needed. Three F, do you have suggestions of how we work with developers and landowners to make this reality? I'm always wary of assisting with public dollars, those who stand to make the most money. Number four, this goes to the senior housing. A soft spot for me, I spent three nights per week in Chugiac with my 93-year-old mother. I spent most of her life in Palmer. I'm not well-versed in the problems besides sizable rent increases that they are experiencing at this time. Number five, I agree with your assessment idea on the MPO. I think the amendment offered by Mr. Tudor and myself, allowing the elected mayor to be a member of the P, MPO for the city of Palmer has strength to the chance of passing, but only time will tell. Please note that my responses are mine alone and do not reflect any other member of the council administration. I reply all in the hopes of spurring conversation with the utmost transparency so all can see my correspondence. All my best on this blessed Sunday to everyone. Take care. Sincerely, John Alcantara, Palmer, Alaska. So with more knowledge, I wish I would have retracted and deleted four members of the council so I wouldn't have been saying that to, to seven members of council, including myself. Of course, since I mentioned councilmember Tudor in the comments, had I had it to do over again, I would, I would have only included Mayor Carrington, councilmember Tudor, and myself. I apologize if it made anybody uncomfortable. And in the future, I will definitely not hit reply all and I will reply directly to the people or only include two other council members other than myself. So my apologies for that and I think it was necessary to read it in the record, so I appreciate it.
All right. And one more thing about the Scottish Highland Games. The kilts that the officers are wearing and the tie that the chief was wearing is a special memorial tartan that they were wearing in honor of our officer Roland that was slain some years ago in the light of duty. Just wanted to note that. Okay, now we're looking for a motion.
So move, move to executive session?
With a subject.
And everything. Executive session, subjects that tend to do prejudice in the reputation and character of any person, city manager evaluation. Note, action may be taken by the council following the executive session. I, I move, I make a motion to vote, to enter into executive session.
Second.
Okay. We've moved and seconded. And by the way, this is the annual city manager's evaluation.
Let's do a vote here.
Right? Oh yeah, don't go anywhere, we gotta vote. Madam Clerk, you can call the roll.
Settle down, man. All of you, settle down. All right, sorry.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anzalotti.
Yes.
Councilmember Ojala.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Malley.
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor.
Yes.
Mayor Carrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Best. I have a pen. Councilmember Alcantara.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right. We'll take a break while we essentially throw everyone out and prepare to the chamber.